Is there any makeup for my shine?
God, I can't help you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Just a little bit of announcement before we turn the floor back over to you. Today is a special planning commission meeting. Purpose of the meeting is a master plan and the master plan only. There will be no minutes approved and no other action taken other than to forward this to the City Commission and to recommend approval and start our 63-day period. We have Anne Marie Kirby from MKSK who is on by Zoom and will be presenting on the screen behind you. She lives way on the east side and can't make it in for this evening. So, other than that, Mr. Chair, Anne Marie, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, the floor is yours.
All right, we'll do a quick roll call around the room.
All right, thank you.
Hold on one second. Anne Marie, hold on, they're doing a roll call.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
Robert Paul.
Sheldon Combs.
Todd Spurrell.
Rick Boland.
Phylline Burr.
Chris Gomiskey.
Blake Moore.
Gail Lidded.
And Mike Wright. First and only agenda night, a matter of master plan work session. We ready for Anne Marie?
Anne Marie, the floor is yours.
All right, I'll start. Thank you so much and good evening and thank you for accommodating me tonight.
No.
Appreciate it.
Go ahead, Anne Marie.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, I, as a reminder, I'm the project manager for the master plan update. I'm from MKSK and we've returned tonight to give an overview of the changes we made to the plan prior to discussion with you last time in December and the comments that were received from the public and then also from the worksheets that you provided to us after the meeting. So, for tonight, we'll be reviewing the overall plan organization again and I'll just go over a high level of important changes that we made to the plan. And then I just want to do a quick recap of engagement summary and the vision, just to provide the information for anyone who might be new in the audience. And then I'll summarize the plan's recommendations. Some of those have been pared down and revised a little bit. And then finally, we'll go over where we are in the process and next steps. So, in the plan, the recommendation section is split between several different topic areas. The most important outcomes of this plan was to include sustainability and green infrastructure, coordinate with Michigan Economic Development Corporation throughout the planning process, and then, most importantly, ground everything in engagement. So, the graphic here shows the different topic areas that were covered in the master plan. We have a section of recommendations for each of these. And then the last part of the plan includes action tables that we will know will help bring these recommendations to life with timelines and priorities and responsible partners. So, before I dive into the engagement and vision and the recommendations of the plan, I just want to point out here that the latest version of the plan that you received is a reflection of our previous conversation with you and input from the public. The Planning Commission did take a closer look at the action tables. So, your feedback helped pare that down and also prioritize each of the action steps. The plan's photos have changed in some of the sections. So, we included more pictures of Huntington Woods residents and homes and greenery. And then, based on some of the feedback, we reordered some of the existing conditions section. So, I think you'll find that there's a little bit better of a flow in the existing conditions and recommendations portion of the plan. And then, one of the bigger items we got feedback on during our last meeting with you was the need to better define sustainability and what it means to Huntington Woods. So, we expanded upon that and added a few more pages to give an overview. And then, we still dive deeper into detail into the green infrastructure recommendations. And then, we also made some edits to recommendations in the zoning and preservation plan. So, throughout the engagement with community and Planning Commission stakeholders, we focused on confirming and refining the goals and strategies from the previous master plans as well as identifying new priorities to include in this update. The community priorities included addressing stormwater management, maintaining roads, increasing sustainability, and also parks and recreation opportunities. And then, residents would also like to see more diverse housing opportunities, improving crosswalk and streets, and increasing safety. And then, this is the vision statement or collection of statements that encompasses the overall goals for the community. This was the vision that was described in the 2008 master plan and then refined for the 2014-2015 master plan update. This is still mostly representative of where the community wants to be. So, we took that, we condensed it down, provided a more succinct vision that would be more clearly presented to the community. I'm not going to read the entire vision, but just know that it focuses on Huntington Woods being a close-knit community that provides superior services, including recreational opportunities, and the city will continue to be known for its historic residential character and also offer a variety of housing types. The commercial corridors in the city will include mixed-use developments, and the city will continue to be walkable. And targeted streets will be enhanced, including with green infrastructure.
Here's the power.
Yeah, just for clarification, I'm just giving a brief summary of updates that we made and some recommendations. I can bring up the actual plan on the screen if there's additional questions at the end. For future land use, so this is the future land use map. Future land use in the city should remain relatively the same with a primary goal of preserving residential land use. And then, there are opportunities for focused investments along Woodward, Coolidge, and 11 Mile Road, including looking for additional housing opportunities in some of those pockets. And then, as I mentioned a little bit ago, we did add a sustainability recommendation section, which really helps define sustainability and what it means for Huntington Woods. The biggest recommendation here is that the city could create a climate action plan to help establish benchmarks and best practices and then implement those. The plan should include a variety of different sections, which would cover different areas of sustainability, which we have laid out here in this graphic, in terms of the environment, but also socially and economically as well. Some examples include looking at how city buildings can be more energy efficient and describe how alternative energy methods can be applied. Electric vehicle charging stations could be implemented in places like City Hall and the Recreation Center, looking at ways to help reduce overall waste in the city. You could increase recycling education awareness and then encouraging different methods for getting around the city and enhancing infrastructure to really become and maintain that walkability, encourage biking and use of transit. So, those are just some examples of things that are included in this section. And then, we also included some of those things in the actual action tables, too, at the end of the plan. And then, one of the top priority items we've heard that the community wanted to address in the plan was managing stormwater runoff. So, we included a section of that in the plan that discusses best practices and recommendations related to green infrastructure. This is a deeper dive into addressing some of the sustainable practices that were part of a climate action plan. The city can use different techniques to help mitigate and capture stormwater runoff, and some of those are pictured here. And then, we also have the city campus area recommendations. This includes City Hall, the Public Safety Building, the Public Parks Building, and Senior Park. All the buildings here were noted as being outdated, but one in particular, the Public Safety Building, was really noted as being functionally obsolete and noted by many that this is a priority to rehab and upgrade this building. So, that is one of the recommendations here. And then, we also included the possibility of creating an RFP for interested developers to create site concepts and describe potential uses on the site. This potential option would not necessarily mean committing to redevelopment of the area, but would provide some insight into what it can be reimagined as. If this were pursued, obviously, the community would still need to be involved in the process. And then, just wanted to show the complete streets plan again. We didn't make any changes to the map since our last meeting. I just want to emphasize that 11 Mile Road was something that we discussed again and should be a priority to address pedestrian safety here. So, one of the recommendations is for a safe routes to school study to be completed for pedestrian crossings along 11 Mile Road. And then, another highlighted improvement for 11 Mile Road is to potentially do a four- to three-lane reduction. So, there was already a study done for this corridor that was done in conjunction with Berkeley and also along Coolidge. But this is maybe something that the city could look into further and coordinate with Berkeley again and potentially do a little bit more in terms of looking at green infrastructure and possible concepts and design, especially looking at those crossings, pedestrian crossings, and then also potentially doing a demonstration project to look at how that could be simulated in the community. So, that's something that could be coordinated with the school and with the city. Then, I wanted to show the DEI Plan summary. This is something that we included in the plan. The city hired Bolear Consulting and G's Strategies to complete the Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan. They engaged city commissioners, released a survey, and held focus groups. And one of them conversations, they found that the majority of residents do desire diversity of those who participated. And that the areas lacking most in diversity are related to race and income. And then, some common themes discovered included the need to dedicate more resources for first services for seniors and that there's a lack of diversified housing. And there are some opportunities for mixed-use developments in the city to help accommodate that. And overall, there are some significant barriers to entries in the city, including higher housing costs. And so, we summarized these findings. And then, we also note that the DEI Plan isn't quite finalized yet, and it's forthcoming with recommendations. And we point to the city website in this section so people know where to find that plan when it is finished. And then, CIB Planning was, they were our partner in this plan, and they helped develop the economic development strategy, which is laid out here. So, you've already referred this a couple of times. They actually came to one of your planning commission meetings to present this. But overall, there are some recommendations that could help propel some development to happen along some of your key corridors. So, for example, a marketing and branding strategy could help market key properties. It could be an important part of this. And then, the business development and retention program is another kind of tool available to... We've laid out some resources here for attracting different organizations and partners and also focusing on small businesses. So, that's something we updated in there in the first row of the table is we kind of added a few things to really be curtailed for smaller businesses and entrepreneurs in the community. And then, listing out kind of primary interests of each group and outreach tools and how to address their needs and help attract and retain businesses. And then, we also note that the first housing options are possible along Woodward, Coolidge, and 11 Mile Road as part of these reinvestment and redevelopment opportunities. And we noted in this section and in the action table, too, that working with adjacent communities, the county, SNCOG, and MEBC will be an important step towards implementation. There are several resources that are listed here that we found were most applicable to Huntington Woods in terms of funding and incentives that are available. And then, you know, you've seen this graphic a few times already, but just showing you... And this is just like a very graphic that we created. We have three phases that we are showing for possible changes and improvements along Woodward Avenue that could happen as part of that economic development strategy. What's really possible, and this is the third phase showing industrial development and enhanced transit that could really help spur reinvestment opportunities. And just to note here, MDOT will be a major player in this. So, that's, I think, one of your first steps here is coordinating with them. We did obtain the resolution that the City of Birmingham has put together that they are sending along to MDOT to request improvements in a road diet along Woodward. So, I think that's something that Huntington Woods could also put together and get that done and really coordinate with MDOT and also your adjacent neighbors along Woodward. First step in kind of transforming this area. And then, we made a similar graphic for Coolidge Highway to show how this area could be reimagined in two different phases. Again, these are just concepts. These are meant to be inspirational marketing tools that you can use to take to your partners like MDOT and Oakland County and MEBC and property owners. And the 2008 master plan had a preservation plan, which remains an important guiding tool for the city. So, we included a summary of that in that date and consolidated some of those recommendations. And then, the zoning plan, for the most part, there was not a significant number of recommended changes to the zoning ordinance or map. The zoning ordinance already has integrated many things that we normally recommend for best practices, including mixed use along commercial corridors and having design guidelines in place. But there's a recommendation to rezone property in the corner of 11 Mile and Woodward from BD to Transitional District to be consistent with the rest of the Woodward corridor. And there were a few preservation plan actions that really fall more under the zoning category. So, those were shifted into this section. And then, we also have some sustainable standards that could be integrated into the zoning ordinance, too. And those are included in the action plan. And as I described a little earlier, the action plan was simplified, and each action item is now shown with a main topic area that it represents. So, this really allowed us to cut down on the number of pages. We did also add priority ratings and responsible partner columns. And this will help provide some guidance when the city is addressing implementation and funding and what actions should be tackled first. And then, we added quite a few sustainability actions beyond just the green infrastructure ones that were already included. And then, we also consolidated some action items, removed others based on the Planning Commission's feedback. And then, this is the planning process schedule. So, this timeline has been revised to show an accurate reflection of when the plan would be anticipated to be adopted. This is assuming that Planning Commission moves forward this evening to recommend to City Commission to approve the distribution of the plan to open up that 63-day public comment period. And I think Hank is going to go into that a little bit more. So, that means that we're looking at potentially approval for adoption by Planning Commission in May and adoption by City Commission in June. And that's all I have for tonight. So, I'm available to help answer any questions you might have. And I also have the plan itself and then the action tables ready to show in case there's any comments on them.
Mr. Chair, at this point in time, what might be a good thing to do is to take your comments from both the Commission and the public and then allow Anne Marie to respond to those. But I would like to have the Commission go first, if possible, because that's the formative process of it. And we'll take whatever public comments that we have at the end. And then, of course, the Commission can come back and comment should it need be, or Anne Marie might be able to answer if there's something pressing us down.
Sounds good. Mayor Paul, you want to pick us up?
No comments at this point.
Sheldon?
I haven't gone through the revised draft. Yeah, I appreciate the summary. I wish the plan itself could be that concise. I know that's faint old. I recognize that it's going to happen.
I'm going to ask that you speak up into the microphones because it doesn't pick up with the masks on and everything like that, so.
What?
Great.
All right. I appreciate the effort that's gone into at least what's been stated about the efforts to make the plan a little more concise than it was previously. I recognize that we've got to incorporate some more stuff related to the advice we're getting with respect to the commercial development side of this. And those things have to be coordinated and incorporated in this plan. I was, I'm particularly happy to see that the action items have been consolidated a bit because I think that those are actually a roadmap for the Planning Commission. And it should be something that we should check back with at least once or twice a year to see what kind of progress we're making and maybe revise our own priorities. Because this is about the time of year I thought that we typically sort of set the agenda for what we want to accomplish during the year. And I think the action plan gives us at least some categories that we can discuss and prioritize among results. But we've been reminded any number of times about measurable results. And I presume we're going to get reminded about that again tonight. But I think that the action plan steps... I've got no problem with the substance of the plan itself. I think the action plan steps for the Planning Commission are the most important parts of the particular master plan update. And I think it's something that we should take to heart as far as determining what our agenda is, both immediate and longer term. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can just respond, just so that, and it might even save some questions. What Sheldon's talking about is a priority list. And the priority list this year, which coincidentally will be on your February agenda now that we have the action items, assuming this gets moved forward tonight, that will be on your February agenda. If it does not, it will be on a future agenda because we won't have any of this approved. And if we don't have it approved, then it'd be hard to pick the items to go on to the plan, which we would suggest. One of the things on that that we have very strong feelings about, or everybody had very strong feelings about, was the safe routes to school and the crossings. So, I mean, I have made kind of a preliminary proposal for the Planning Commission based off of our action items in the master plan, assuming it comes forward. That's what will be coming for you, for your approval to change around. Some things may be high that you want low, some things may be low that you want high. But that should happen at the February meeting pending approval tonight.
Okay, great, thank you. Todd?
I think most of my questions were answered in Sheldon's and Hank's discussion there. The priority list is important and what we push forward. And I do appreciate the edits made, especially, like you were saying, consolidating the action items. And then, I think it's up to us to figure out what are the top ones and to go from there and put some actual smart tools associated with them. So, I'm good. Up to now.
Thanks, Todd.
This is going to be a question. How are we addressing diversifying our housing options? I might be missing it in here, but I don't feel like we're directly addressing that.
Anne Marie, do you want to take that or do you want me to?
Sure, I can take the first stab at it. And then, if you want to add to it, Hank, that's fine. So, we addressed it mostly in the economic development strategy section, talking about that there could be mixed-use development and diversified housing in, along the commercial corridors. And that's where those areas, that's where we'd be targeting diversified housing options, whether those be apartments or townhouses. Certainly, I think we could add like a little more detail on what those options might be. But I don't necessarily think we want to limit it to anything necessarily, but we could call out a few examples if that would help.
Do we need to include any of that in the zoning portion?
So, those would already be allowed under your zoning in those corridors.
Those would be permitted uses. And I think one other thing, too, with this, I think part of this is not pigeonholing us into specific, like specifically stating we're looking for this, this, or this. I think a lot of it is that somebody can come to us with a proposal. And while it may not have been something that we directly put in there, we're still open to it. I don't want to rule things out by ruling them in. So, I think that's where at least my head was at on that. Anne Marie, does that kind of jive with what you were thinking?
Yeah, I agree with that. I think if you say we want townhouses in this location, then you might be scaring some people away. So, I don't...
You might be missing a condo opportunity or something like that.
Right.
Okay, that was it for me.
Okay. Joe?
I don't really have any questions. I just wanted to, I thought the changes were good. I thought, you know, one of the big things was the defining sustainability. So, I thought that change I appreciated. No further comments for me.
Thanks, Joe. Chris?
No, no further questions for me. Already addressed.
Thank you. Blake?
I have nothing to ask or add.
Thank you, Blake. Gail?
I do. I wasn't here in December, so I missed out on that. But I took the online version and printed the whole thing out and read through it. One of the things that specifically I noticed under your page 28, existing land use under vacant, you said there are very few vacant properties throughout Huntington Woods. What I think you're trying to say is there's very few vacant land properties. There's a difference between being a vacant property, meaning nobody living in it, and being a vacant land property. And I think we need to distinguish that. Under... Go ahead.
No, she was just acknowledging your comment.
Okay. Under demographics on page 32, on many of them, you say that those are from 2019. And in other places, it's missing. And so, I just want to be consistent that if that's the case, that it is... Or not, it's not in 2000, that's the demographic page. But I'm one of the, I'm the one that has the circles. On page 34, when you're talking about existing housing conditions and so on, I think something that should be coming up when we're talking about dealing with seniors or other people for their ability to live in their homes, I think that we should bring in something about universal design and workshops or whatever else for our communities or for the builders to try to make them more aware of trying to keep people in their homes and making it available for them. The one thing that I didn't like under 2019 statistics is when you were talking about economic existing conditions. We're not in 2019. We're in 2022, and we've lived through COVID. And this report doesn't reflect that at all, whether it's unemployment or whatever the case might be. And I think that it needs to be in the report that when you look back at it five years later or 10 years later, it's notice that we're not just relying on statistics that we got off of data sheets. And the other thing is, you talked about 11 Mile Road and repurposing the lanes and working with Berkeley. And you mentioned about Birmingham's plan that you're going to forward to us. Nowhere have we discussed that already Pleasant Ridge and Ferndale are going on a road diet from 8 Mile Road to 696. And that needs to come into play because we're in between Pleasant Ridge and Birmingham. So, I think that we need to address what's going on to the south. Those are my comments.
Okay. Anne Marie, did you want to address some of that or do you want me to?
Again, I'll go ahead, Hank, and then if you have anything to add. So, I, yeah, certainly, those make sense. I mean, if there's missing references to the data years, we'll include that. And I can make that update to the existing land use for vacant land properties in the existing land use section. As far as economic existing conditions, you know, the data we're pulling from is from the Census SNCOG data sources. And I can check back in with CIB Planning to see if they have anything else they can add in that section. You know, I agree with you. I think reflecting of some of the current times we've been, especially in the last couple of years with COVID, I think there's maybe a few other things we could add in that section. So, certainly, we can make that change. And then, yeah, happy to add to the other portion about universal design. I think that's great. And then, Hank, I don't know if you want to talk about the road diet portion. What I was speaking about was the resident... was the resolution, and I did, I did send that to Hank. And I think that's something he's going to be bringing before Planning Commission.
That's, that's going to go not only before the Planning Commission, but it'll end up at the City Commission. Part of the reason that we have it here is that we haven't been to the table with that yet. And our meetings have been with MDOT and have to find out the feasibility and see what kind of funding is there. There will be a resolution forthcoming to go to the City Commission just for their approval, hopefully. It'll come from the Planning Commission, too. So what we have to do is create that. I will point out that the Birmingham resolution is very, very recent, and we just got that. So before we redraft it and come into here, but that's not anything that's going to be in the master plan. That's just going to happen. Whenever you do a plan or a master plan or something like that, there's always work in progress. There's always other things that are coming up. You're never going to be able to get everything. Otherwise, you're never going to get your plan off the ground. So just because it's not in the plan doesn't mean it won't happen. It's just like ordinances. You write an ordinance, and an ordinance evolves. The same with the master plan, and it will. That's why they have revisions at that. So the goal with the master plan is, is if it's approved, and you can approve it and send it on tonight with, with the addition of a couple of comments that Anne Marie talked about and some of the things that Gail has suggested. The universal design is a real good concept that she can incorporate into that. So you can approve it with references to that. I will point out with the data that originally when we started this project, the data was from 2016. And that was the data that was available to sign at the start of this. And when the 2020 Census data became out, and then the additional SEMCOG data came out, we did update the data in the middle of this process to try to get the most complete data. As you know, COVID's still going, and studies are still going. So we don't exactly know what the complete effects of that is. But to the extent that there's something else out there, and there's some date updating that can go on to these pages, certainly that's something we should do. But it doesn't stop the plan from going forward. Other than that, Anne Marie, did you have anything else?
I think you covered it all. Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
Nothing else to add, other than I, like Sheldon, appreciate the concise version of the drafts here. So thank you. I think that's it. We'll open it up for public participation. We will limit comments to three minutes. Anybody wishing to speak, if you could approach the podium, give us your name and your address.
Alda, you guys got to sit. Priscicchioni, I don't know if this is appropriate. 10704 Ludlow Avenue, 25-year resident. I have a lot of questions. And I wrote a list, and I have three minutes. So my first thing is all of these ideas, are we, how are we, take the Woodward corridor, the redevelopment. That's a big project. I'm in the construction industry. Are we going to hire somebody to manage that, develop it, go out for RFPs? I mean, that's a whole full-time job in and of itself. Is that something the city's taking on?
The city doesn't own that property.
Right.
So it would be, you know, we'd have to somehow figure out how to entice those landlords to want to do it or sell it.
That's my point.
So, you know, the city...
Was it even viable?
I think we're merely providing recommendations and resources for those private business owners to move forward and allow for redevelopment of those areas, and setting the city up for that potential redevelopment, not setting the city up to manage a redevelopment of those areas. So we're opening it up to say that the City of Huntington Woods is open to a redevelopment of that area, and we are going to assist in providing resources through the master plan.
What kind of resources can we provide?
So in the master plan, there's some specific organizations that we can point those business owners to, funding sources, whatever it might be for redevelopment there.
So is there going to be a, is that you, Hank, or is somebody going to be hired to do that? That's a big job.
It's already done. It's in the master plan.
Okay. Somebody's going to have to facilitate that. I'm just, all right. So that's, I'm throwing it in there.
There's, there's, no, no, no. And I just want to be clear about this. What we do is exactly what Rick has said. We provide a framework. Somebody has to come in with a proposal.
So as a landowner, I would come and say, I want to sell my property.
You would come in and say, hey, I'd like to do this to my property. Can you help me do this? Okay, so we're on 11-mile, we're in the campus section here. So what might be available? There may be aid through Oakland County. There may be brownfield credits, which on this particular property, I'm sure there would be. There may be different types of things. We mentioned that in the report. So that people can come and they can say, okay, well, look, Huntington Woods has some of this. Maybe that's a place I'd like to do business or to try to do things like that. I will point out that City of Huntington Woods has exactly zero property on Woodward. So it has to be, it has to be property owner-driven. And as far as the improvements to the other part, that's all MDOT. So we have nothing to really bring to the table, other than a framework to allow it to happen.
Okay, that was my, you answered my question, because I wrote, we don't own any of this property. How are we, what is this such a big part of our...
Well, you're trying to entice people to come in and make offers.
Okay, that makes sense. And the other, well, just at the end, you were talking about the safe walks to school across 11-mile and then narrowing. Isn't that double duty? If we have a crosswalk with a light, why do we have to narrow it, too? It just, that's my, it seems like we're paying for double belts and suspenders.
Okay. Again, I'll answer, because it's a quick answer. We don't, there's no real cost, except for the light, if we choose to do that. And we also need buy-in and partnership from Berkeley in order to make that happen. Again, what the document is, is the framework to move forward with these things. So we have to have buy-in on that. It's not going to be the City of Huntington Woods calling Berkeley and say, hey, how about a light? So there has to be a plan. We already have the number of cars that go up and down 11-mile each day, and they support the road diet. Whether or not Berkeley wants to enter into that, we're not there yet. So if the road diet is one thing, the road diet will also be done at a point in time, and it can be done with striping. It's not that we go in and tear up 11-mile again. What it does is it would be a test striping area should it come to fruition. Right now, this is our wish list. And how we get there is going to be through discussion and that. It doesn't map out every single thing. It does, but it gives us the options that might be most helpful in moving the City of Huntington Woods forward.
Okay, thank you. You answered that. And I'm going down my list. You hit most of them. One thing that hit me is the electric chargers. I mean, we're a square-mile city. If we have electric cars, wouldn't we have the electric chargers at our house? And if someone visited the city, they would be visiting someone here. And when they charge at my house, why are we going to pay to put chargers in?
A lot of times, that can be done with grant money, or there might be other funding sources available. And if that's the case, the City of Huntington Woods would certainly like to be as green as possible and avail themselves of any financial opportunities to do so. So I think what would happen is, is that if there was funding available through DTE grants, or through state grants, or through that, to put a charging station here, or a charging station at the rec center, we certainly would want to at least look at that.
All right. And the last thing, I know I'm out of time. I was looking at the stormwater retention and the diversion, and it's a huge issue. And I appreciate the thought of it. But I will go on record, what happened to Scotia Park was a debacle. And I just don't want to see it happening again. And we hired people who are very knowledgeable professionals. And that is, and I live there, it's an eyesore, and it's a mosquito haven, and it's a mess. I don't want to see it again.
And I'll point out that none of that came through the Planning Commission. So our goals are to have stormwater retentions, to reduce our, to actually make our community more green with the stormwater, and also to provide areas for the stormwater to go, other than in people's basement. So that's one of the things that we're trying to do with this, and it's one of the goals that we can achieve. While the master plan is not going to solve all the problems of that, it gives us, again, a footprint to start on that, some ideas of what to do. Like if we narrowed the 11-mile down, and we created some swales that might have something to do with stormwater retention and helping out, then that's a really good idea that people might like. People might rather have that over a bike lane. So, you know, the space will be there if we do this, if it moves forward. But again, these are all items that Sheldon has even commented that, you know, when they get on our program, when they get on our action items, and then when they get on our priority list, these are things that'll be produced. So this will be an ongoing thing, and I would encourage you to check back with the Planning Commission when we do our priority list, so that you can see where some of this stuff falls on the list.
Okay.
The other thing that I just want to emphasize with this is that just because we have a myriad of action items, doesn't mean they're all going to be on there at the same thing, because it's impossible to encompass that we're going to accomplish all of that. So what they do is they'll pick approximately nine items a year, three high priority, three medium priority, and three low priority. And those items will be addressed as we can throughout the year.
And then, since you brought up the, we were talking about stormwater, I mean, I didn't see it anywhere in here, like underwater, if we're going to redo roads, or parking lots along Woodward, or Coolidge, 11-mile underground water retention.
We're not doing any, that's not, that's not what's being proposed. What we're talking is...
I know, but I'm saying, maybe we ought to, if we're part of our development, that's, that's the best way to do water, stormwater retention.
Again, as, as we pointed out in the beginning, underwater storm retention, although it would be wonderful to have and wonderful to do, we're not anywhere near redoing 11-mile at this point. We've done it just very recently. And Woodward, again, we can't do anything without MDOT buying it.
No, I know. But I saw the consolidated parking lots. You have something to think about.
That's private property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. And I probably, thanks for reminding me, Hank. I probably should have level-set a couple of things before public participation. I am pausing the timer when we respond. So I want to give people a chance to ask as many questions as they're able to. What we're trying to prevent, in the past, we've had people want to stand up and just sort of monologue without any real questions. We're trying to prevent that. The other thing is, you know, we've, we've had quite a few of these. And the vast majority, I would say almost all of the questions we've received are concerns where people are taking this as a, in three years, we're doing every single thing on here, and it is what it is, and it's black and white. This, it's very much, like Hank said, not that. This is, this is very conceptual in nature. People tend to get very, very focused on one, one thing and say, no, I don't want X. I don't want a road diet. I don't want a traffic light, whatever it is. These are conceptual. There's, there's a long way to go for everything on this list. So I always try to start that from the beginning. Anyone else?
Mike, I want to add that we do have onsite storage of stormwater under action item 11, or sorry, 10, for commercial properties.
Oh, great. Thank you.
It would be great.
Anyone else? Sure, just give us your name and your address, if you don't mind.
My name's Susan Consedine. I'm at 12727 LaSalle. I just walked over here. And I'd like to talk to you about residential stormwater and the problems with it going on to adjacent properties. As I understand, can we email them directly later?
You can email me directly, and I'll just send it.
Okay, good. I'd like to give you some more detailed feedback in three minutes with some pictures. So one thing I want to bring to your attention is the whole stormwater analysis really has to be gone over at the building level, at the permit level. So for instance, you know, if you're putting, excuse my drawing, if you've got a garage being put at the very far setback in a corner, especially with a gabled roof, the water can only go this way. So if it's not going down to the street, where's that water going? In my case, it's going into my yard. I'm R1C. I've got 1,200 square feet more than this house does, and they're using my rear property to do it. So another thing that you got to look at is driveways. You might have to look when a driveway is being poured, ask them, which way is it going to slope? Not just a picture. Another thing, too, you might see when somebody wants to build a garage, you get a picture like this. You get a picture like this that shows a drip edge. And then 10 years later, they get a new roof or something, and they put gutters and downspouts on them, and they're directing them somewhere else. So maybe every time a garage is re-roofed, ask them, are the downspouts staying in the same place? Another thing you want to look at is patios. If they keep reducing, the house behind me has a little tiny postage stamp of grass, because they put in a patio. And who's looking over that? Another thing is where basements, when a basement sump pump goes in, ask them, where's the water going to go? I've heard of neighbors who they start getting flooded out by a sump pump. People put in pea gravel. That changes the, that changes the slope of things. I had another neighbor who got frustrated with so much water from a, from a neighbor behind them. Nothing was being done. So they paid big bucks to put a drain in. Now it goes down to the street, and guess what? The effluent comes out and freezes on the unsuspecting other neighbor's driveway. So who's going to get sued when somebody slips on that ice? The person who gave them the water? The person who put the pump in? The city for approving it, putting the permit on? And then the last thing I want to say is if the city is going to spend a lot of money to analyze these properties, situations, actually let the person come in and be clear. The city just spent a whole lot of money to analyze what was going on in my situation. And then they neglected to analyze the one property that was giving me all the problem. I can show you the drawing. Everybody else, all this detail. And then they left the one out that was giving me all the problem. There's enough detail that I can see why, in the fall of 2019, why it started giving so much water, because they put in a new driveway. And I can see the driveway is sloped toward the back. So they're not keeping their own water. So please, I think citizens should be involved. You should have a citizen group to give feedback, because it makes for problems between otherwise happy neighbors.
I think, Hank, correct me if I'm wrong, I think everything that was just mentioned is addressed in City Building Code, is it not?
It is, it is. And it's not part of the master plan.
Yeah, that is, that is all...
But I do thank her for her comment.
Yeah, they're all valid points, but have nothing to do with the master plan. It's all building code, which it already exists.
Well, it's city procedures, follow it.
Mr. Chair, that's not going to be a debate we can have this evening.
Fair enough. Anyone else?
Harold Snack, 13108 Talbot. What I want to acknowledge, this is a definitely improved plan. It's much better than the earlier draft. Congratulate the work that's been done. I have a couple of questions. Two of the objectives, one relating to privatization, the other relating to collaboration with other cities, are labeled sustainability. I'm not clear how those relate to sustainability. Also, it's not at all clear what you would possibly privatize. I assume the employees have some interest in that. And secondly, it's not clear what kind of collaboration you might be talking about. I recall some years ago, you tried to collaborate with Berkeley on 911. That apparently didn't work. So do you have actually specific ideas about what to privatize, or what to collaborate, or is this just sort of a good idea? Any answer to that?
Can you specify which action item or...
Well, sure. If you look at action item 15 and 16, and it's sort of under the category of sustainability.
Anne Marie, can you put that up, please? Okay. If, if I could maybe address some of the, what you said, I just want to make sure that you're, you know, that you get your questions answered.
Yep.
When we're talking about collaborating with other local communities, we already do. We have our police dispatches handled through Berkeley after hours. We share incarceration space with them on a temporary basis. We don't house prisoners or anything like that here. We work with other communities as far as fire cooperation, mutual aid agreements and things like that. So that's already happening. And what we're looking at is nothing specific, but what we would be remiss if we didn't look for opportunities to take a look at that and see whether it makes sense for the future of Huntington Woods. And then at that point in time, that would be a City Commission issue.
Okay. So there's nothing particular in mind at this point in time?
Nothing particular in mind at this point in time, but we would not want to miss opportunities coming our way.
And is that true for privatization as well?
Privatization can be different things. Privatizations and public-private partnerships are two different things.
Agreed.
Public-private partnership may be something where the city, let's take this site, for example, where the city has the land, and we come to the table with that, and somebody comes to us with a proposal to develop it. That might be something where there's an opportunity for a public-private partnership. As far as privatization, that could mean something as simple as, does it make sense for the City of Huntington Woods to, for example, bid out leaf collection, or something like that, that takes a tremendous amount of resources, or the sidewalks, you know, that type of thing. That's where we might look for other opportunities for that. And again, this is just one of the things where the City Commission has, wouldn't look favorably if we didn't take a look at the opportunities to do that. Doesn't mean that we're going to do everything, doesn't mean it'll ever happen. But you never know when a great deal walks your way.
Okay. So you're saying we're open to privatization, or really more contracted?
What I'm saying exactly is that we haven't been proposed anything, or we haven't actively sought anything out that we're looking to replace, but that the possibility exists to save some money, to allow even our staff and our employees to go on and do other things that might be also important. And we can also have lower costs by saving money with privatization. That would be something that the City Commission would possibly consider.
Okay. All right. So there's nothing specific there at this point?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Yeah, you, the vocabulary is, is important. You might want to add PPP, or you might want to talk about contracting out. Usually when people use the term privatization, it often is poorly done. It usually means contracting out for, to another private sector substantial services, and it doesn't sound like you're talking about that.
Were we specifically not pigeonholing ourselves into anything like that?
I'm just saying the word privatization has-
Understand. Appreciate your comment.
Good, okay. The other question in terms of sustainability is, why is the city's energy plan not reflected in this plan, as for example, the DEI is and so forth, and all the other plans?
The city's energy plan that you're referring to, I'm assuming it's a 2019 plan?
2019, exactly.
We've long since passed a 2019 plan and are currently working with Verge, which is an energy savings and a savings corporation.
It's not the same thing.
It's not the same thing.
Right.
And what we're doing with that is, is that we've updated since then, and we're exploring the opportunities of savings based on technology increases and savings that might be realized in energy savings, which may pay for the cost of implementing new streetlights, new furnaces, new air conditioning-
You're talking about the revolving fund?
New lights. No, what I'm talking about is, is that if we take money and we, like, for example, if we finance the cost of a furnace, and the savings that we get by going through a company like Verge to try to save that, pays for the cost of the furnace, then we've saved money. It makes sense.
I, I understand that.
Okay. But the 2019 plan is-
The plan does talk about a revolving fund, as you recall.
The, the 2019 plan is-
That's great. I just want to know, why isn't, and you're talking about a plan for sustainability, why do you not give yourselves credit for having developed an energy plan in 2019, which, of course, it would be wonderful if you would share with the public on the City's website, like every other plan, but that is yet to be done?
I'll mention it to the-
I'm just saying that so you guys get, so get kudos for having supported an energy plan. Why not build it into the sustainability component of the master plan? And certainly, I would, I think all of us would appreciate being able to see the plan by having it on the website where all the other plans are as well, and that would help educate the citizens as well. So it's not a big deal, but it shouldn't be that hard. Final question, I think, really is, a couple of questions.
That's three minutes.
Okay.
Let's make it quick.
All right. So he took most of mine.
I paused it when he was speaking. You've been speaking for over three minutes.
Okay. So the question is, in an earlier presentation, talking about Woodward development, you talked about buildings that might be four or conceivably five stories tall. I assume that's not the case anymore, because you've limited it to three stories? Is that correct?
The typical three-story building is what's allowed, but there are provisions for the RT district and the zoning ordinance that allow it to be taller, provided certain conditions are met.
Okay. So if I live in the Woodward corridor, should I anticipate that there may be four- and five-story buildings blocking my view from the sun and having people observe my house and backyard?
Not at this point.
Not at this point? But it is possible, Hank.
It's, anything is possible, but our, but our zoning ordinance doesn't allow for that right now.
Okay. Do you anticipate changing it?
I don't anticipate anticipating.
Okay. So I'm, I'm assuming that my, the answer then is that there will not be buildings bigger than three stories tall?
I'm not going to be definite about anything, because zoning ordinance can change. There's BUDs, there's stuff like that. But at the point in time, right now, our zoning ordinance doesn't-
That's what I gathered. That's what I was trying to better understand here. I was curious about the objective related to-
Okay, thank you. We're, we're done. We're going to close public participation.
Are we done?
Yes. Thank you for your comments.
You bet.
Hank, if I'm not mistaken, the next thing on the agenda would be to make a motion to push this forward to City Commission. And if we want to add any of the edits, such as what Gail suggested, we would include that today.
I would, I would suggest that if you move this, and, and again, Anne Marie, I'm going to bring you back on. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. So what we'd be looking for at this point in time is a recommendation to move the master plan forward into the review period, to accept it and adopt it, and then to move it forward to the City Commission for their review and acceptance. We do have a sixty-three-day review period that has to happen.